Meeting called to order.
Aye.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Cleaven.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, moment of reflection. You'll now salute the flag.
The flag is to the flag. The American states of America. And to your republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, and liberated and just.
As compared to open public meetings act, tractor two thirty-one PL nineteen seventy-five, I quinotes that this meeting has been provided in the following manner. Annual notices forwarded to the Asbury Park press, the coastert, and star ledger on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now on special event applications from recreation director Alicia Floyd.
Good evening, mayor and council. The three applications to be considered tonight include the Jersey Shore Rescue Mission, annual cold giveaway, Sons of Ireland polar bear plunge, and a wedding. Any questions?
Thank you.
No? Alright, thank you.
Now, Mayor, some city council, councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes, good evening. I would like to tell you that the Asbury Park Recreation Department is hosting their trunk or treat. It's Halloween, it's the thirty-first, it's going to be right here in the parking lot. And we have candy that we are going to be giving to our ghosts and goblins, but we would also need you to bring your car and decorate it and give out some candy for the kids. So if you're interested, that lovely lady in the red, that is our recreation director, you want to see Ms. Alicia Floyd, give her a call. We need you, we have candy, and we do have a rain date. Well, actually, if it rains, then you'll just drive through, am I correct? And Ms. Floyd will have candy all bagged up for the kids. So it's a fun event, and the community loves it, so I hope that you will participate. I have one other thing to inform you of. We have First Fridays, which is art and sound at the train station. The next First Friday is November first, and I hope that you will come and participate. And lastly, is Fall Fun Day, which is Saturday, October twenty-sixth, from one to four. It's Sunset Park, and so you're going to bring your kids and hope that you'll come out and celebrate with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman.
I have nothing at this time, thank you.
Councilmember Cleaven.
This Saturday, October twelfth, there's going to be a paper shredding truck in the city hall parking lot. It will be here from nine to twelve, or unless they fill up earlier. So this is an opportunity to get rid of all that extra paper in your home. Come on out, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Moore.
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, Mayor, from the deputy city manager.
Nothing, thank you.
Alright. Mayor, from the city attorney.
Nothing at this time.
I'm now going to turn it over to the members from the Asbury Park TV for a presentation of the Jack Awards.
So, Asbury, oh, this is loud. Asbury Park TV has been honored with four Jersey Access Group awards. Mike Sedano is by far the reigning champion with three of them. He won three awards for the AP Three Film Challenge, the Twenty Twenty-three Compilation Arts Rule in Asbury Park, the Cardboard Show, and a conversation with AP Amp. So we have awards for that. And we also have an award for Moata, but he doesn't, he's not here. Moata received an award for the Juneteenth Highlights. So I'm sure most people know, AP TV is the public access channel in Asbury Park. Angela and myself serve on it. We do videos, we do award-winning videos. So we're going to let Mike say a few words, if you would like.
It's always nice to be recognized. It's for your, for your work, and I'm glad that we have AP TV. We keep wanting AP TV to grow, and we need the support of everybody, both the council and the community, to tune in and, tune in and turn on. So we hope to have far more, far more filmmakers next year receiving awards than me receiving three awards.
Do you want to talk about how people can tune into these stories?
If you live in Asbury Park, you can watch AP TV on Optimum Seventy-seven and on FiOS twenty-eight through most of Monmouth County, but most of us don't have that anymore, so you can also search AP TV on your Roku or Apple TV, and you can stream and watch on demand. And if you don't have either of those, it's asburyparktv.com.
And also, if you are interested in becoming a member, then you just have to put your application in. We would love to have you. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now moving on to a presentation by block three thousand nine hundred and one Q O Z F L L C, and we'll turn it over to our director of planning and redevelopment, Michelle Alonso.
I was going to use this microphone, but, good evening. Before I turn this over to the developer representatives to make the presentation for tonight's project, I was just going to say, this is a proposed development project for two twelve to fourteen Second Avenue, for fifteen residential units and twenty parking spaces. It is an apartment building, and the, this is to, proposed to be redeveloped by the owner, which is block three nine zero one Q O Z F L C. I'm going to turn it over to the owner, developer's attorney, Mr. Kevin Kennedy.
Hold on one second, please. Bill, can you do me a favor?
Yeah.
Turn it so the audience can see it also. We can see it on an angle, and, and everybody within two hundred feet is notified?
Yes.
Thanks.
How's this? Is that better?
Is that better for the audience?
You have plans up there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council and city officials. My name is Kevin Kennedy. I'm going to turn to my office in Middletown. I'm very happy and honored to be here, and Michelle took care of my hardest part tonight, was the name, the name of our company is block three oh nine, three nine oh one, Q O Z F L L C. So for obvious reasons, I'm going to refer to that as the applicant. And we are here tonight, we are, my client is a proposed subsequent developer in the waterfront redevelopment zone, and the client is obviously proposing to develop property, and the subject site is a vacant lot, it's fourteen thousand square feet, and it's between two apartment buildings, and the applicant, as you'll hear, is proposing fifteen residential condominium units, five one-bedroom units, and ten two-bedroom units. And as Michelle indicated, there's twenty-three apartment spaces required, and we're proposing twenty-eight. As part of the city's nuanced waterfront redevelopment process, we appeared before the TRC, and that was, I think, June tenth, two thousand twenty-four. We had a very nice, very positive meeting, and we received the TRC endorsement to proceed. So the next step is for us to appear before you tonight, and in an informal present code, presentation at an agenda meeting. And we are proposing and hoping that you, as city council members, will review the architectural drawings and diagrams and generally endorse the project, so we can move on. And we have a very short presentation tonight, and as I understand it, if we are fortunate to receive your general endorsement tonight, the next steps in the process would be a combination of negotiating and executing a subsequent developer agreement, being officially designated as a subsequent developer, and then, of course, hopeful approval or presentation to the planning board. So tonight, my sole presenter is Bill Stuckey, who I'm sure many of you know, Bill is a wonderful guy, lots of building and development experience and construction experience, and lots of experience in Asbury Park. He is a representative of the applicant, and he is specifically authorized to be here tonight and to make this presentation and to answer any questions that he, that you may have, and he is intimately familiar with this project being involved from the inception to right now and to continue, and he was present at the TRC meeting. And just before I turn it over to Bill, I understand that the city has a desire for even extra transparency purposes, out of the abundance of caution you've asked for further notice. And I applaud and I appreciate and respect the even enhanced sense of transparency, and I would be remiss if I did not give a little bit of a shout-out to Michelle Alonso, she's been very helpful for us, and she was, served the notice, so Michelle, we appreciate that. And against that backdrop, Mr. Mail, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, I would like to turn it over to Bill Stuckey and have him give a brief presentation, so you can be familiar with the proposed project.
Should I use this, or, can everybody hear me? Can you all hear me? Okay, I prefer shut the speed. Into what I just dropped. First of all, it's great to be here again. This is the sixth project I've, I'm doing for Pat Fasano and Vince, the owners of the LLC, and excited to build this building. You all have seen, I hope, the colored elevations that we gave Michelle, so you've got those, or can you see this here? Yes. So when you start a project of this nature, it takes anywhere from six to nine months to get plans done that are part of the subsequent developer application to I start. So I gave Sonnenfield and Trope have done several buildings for us, and they're out of Homedale. And our architect there is Steve Tiki. So when Pat and I talked about me doing this building in a restaurant on Second and Kingsley, which I'll see you all on in November, I said, Steve, go out and take a picture, pictures of the beautiful brickwood to the right, and then design a building that complements that. And this is exactly what Steve did. You have the same terracotta roofs, similar windows. They have some Juliet balconies, we have more of them, we have six on the front, one, two, three, four. They have four. And the buildings complement each other. When we were at the TRC, there were some comments which Michelle captured in her September twenty-seventh email to us. The garage door is, has to be sixteen feet wide to allow flow in both directions. The door is dark in this picture because this was given to the TRC. It will be muted, so it's not so prominent, and we totally agree with that perception of the front elevation. I'm thinking the off-white color of the stucco or a very muted cream color yellow, but not this prominent. Just, we're going to have EV charging stations in the building. I think, are we required to have four, Michelle?
Four.
It's not eight, it's four, which I think is a great thing, and my son ranvold a charging an EV developer for five years, so I know a lot about that, and he has two EVs at home. Let me see what else. Michelle had a couple paragraphs on the windows, and I'm intimately familiar with that, they're not flush, they're set back. There were certain proportions that you have to abide by, you know, the width in relation to the height. The plaque on the front of the building will be great, happy to do that. The lot is slightly undersized, we're required to have fifteen thousand square feet. I don't have the site plan with me, but it's, it's, Kevin, I thought we were at like fourteen seven hundred.
Yeah, it's about fourteen thousand plus, yes.
Yes, but it was really close.
Yes.
That's the only variance that we'll need at the planning board, as far as I'm aware of, and I'm pretty much aware of most things, if not all. So that's, do you want, you have the plans, so seeing floor plans on the second, third, and fourth floor.
We, we haven't, but the public does it, so if you just.
I'll walk this through. This is a smaller version of the front elevation, and the right elevation, the stucco, real stucco, hard concrete stucco, will be on the front, and sides of the building to the elevator, to the stair shafts and elevator shaft, and then the remainder of both the right and left side will be hardy plank panels and hardy plank siding. And the rear, where is the rear? The rear is all hardy plank, and we have the panels on the parapet. Now, one thing that I'm aware of from Seventh Avenue, which I, I got approved, was the screening of the air conditioning condensers. We have a parapet wall that is approximately five feet above the roof line, four feet above the roof line, so the condensers are about three feet high, and they're spread out on the roof, so they're screened, and are going to be high enough up, I think so, that I think noise isn't going to be a big issue. If you all have questions, that, feel free to.
No, we'll do that after.
Okay. I just, I should mention, there is no roof that amended on this building, unlike Seventh Avenue. So the, the podium, the parking garage, if you will, has an electric water in a mechanical room, an elevator, the building serviced by an elevator, there's going to be a nice lobby on the right-hand side of the building, which I should show you. You can see it here, there's an arched way in a terracotta roof, so I think that's a nice entrance. We've got twenty-eight parking spaces, all, there are ten two-bedroom units, so we're going to provide the two, two parking spaces for those units. They're tandem spaces, you know, front and back. And then the, the one-bedroom units will all have one space. And I think that I was really happy when we were over on our parking requirement by five spaces, because I've been here in the summer, parking's an issue. And I forgot to mention, one of the great things about this location is you're about a five-minute walk from the beach, and all of the boardwalk that has been redeveloped. I mean, I just think it's a great location. The floor, I know these are hard for you to see. The floor plates are similar, the second and third floor each have five units, and they're the same. The third floor is a little different. The, there are two bed, there, I think there, there's three two-bedrooms and two wands. The hallway's in the middle, standard stuff. By, there, there's refus, the mechanical room. By code, you have to have two means of egress other than an elevator. And the units flow, they, we spent a lot of time on bulking out the one- and two-bedroom units and making sure that the room sizes were adequate in the living area, and so that's, that, those are the floor plates, which I'm sure it's very hard for you to see. I'm happy to leave them off if you all want to look at them. So that's all I've really got.
I have a question.
Sure.
Are these for sale or for rent?
For sale.
And what's the, may I ask, ballpark?
Yes, I thought this question would come up, so I'm going to answer it as specifically as I can. I know what the Asian in Baltic you're selling at, per square foot. I'm comfortable saying we're going to be substantially below that, and I'm not going to talk specific figures.
I don't know what that means.
Well, the, should I tell you pricing of the units now? Is that what you want to know?
If you can, I mean.
Yeah, I can. I, I just, I don't know where this information goes, but.
You're on TV.
Okay, so, okay, I didn't realize I was on TV. But the Asian in Baltic, from what I understand and have seen, gotten brochures, are somewhere around nine hundred dollars per square foot of living, and I think we're going to be somewhere around seven fifty.
Break that down to.
Price.
So a thousand-square-foot unit at the Asian in Baltic, from what I know.
Nine hundred thousand.
About nine hundred. For the same-sized unit, which we do have, we're looking at about seven fifty. That's what we're thinking.
Seven hundred fifty thousand.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Bill, do you have any accommodations for bicycle storage?
On the first floor, we do have some room, and we thought about it. Unlike Seventh Avenue, where we had a dedicated room, I was thinking, and this came up, there isn't a dedicated room, we could potentially lose a parking space and still comply, and have bike racks there in a parking space. So if the, you know, if you want to make that recommendation, I mean, the planning board may bring that up and happy to accommodate that. It's a good thing to have it to be.
Yeah, I think so, too. And what, how are you making out with stormwater management and any green infrastructure initiatives that go along with this project?
Well, the, the stormwater storage fault on this, on the left side of the site, treats the water before it goes into the ground. It has baffles in it and cleans the water, to the extent it can. I'm not technically proficient in this. And the building itself, in terms of being energy efficient, the energy codes in the last twenty years have been, I guess, increased substantially. It used to be R nineteen in the ceiling when I was building houses thirty years ago, now it's like R forty-nine. And all of the heating and air conditioning units are super-high efficiency. Not that I built cheap houses thirty-five years ago, but what we put in at ten and eleven seer for an air condenser is now like fourteen or fifteen. And, and we have to wrap the house and, and tape the joints after the sheathing is applied. And so, you know, the building is very energy efficient.
So you're meeting the standards, or are you doing anything over and above the standards?
You know, that came up at the TRC with the restaurant we're going to be in here presenting, and I'll actually have my architect here for that one. And I don't know enough about it. In other words, I think you're talking about a LEED-certified building.
Not necessarily LEED-certified, but.
Working towards.
Equivalent to LEED.
Yes, yes.
And Bill, if I may, I also recall at the TRC, Chairwoman Kislik, who was there, very strongly indicated that at the public hearing, when we get to the planning board, if we get to the planning board, we're going to have to give specific information about the green water, I'm sorry, the, the green infrastructure details about not necessarily being LEED-compliant, but what we are doing.
Right.
To make it a better, more environmentally acceptable place.
And I'll talk with Steve, because this came up, he's on vacation with his family, and I'll talk with him and Andy, the owner of the firm. Andy's doing the restaurant, Steve's doing this. So I'll talk to him about the things we can do, so at the planning board, we're prepared to address that.
One last question. As far as your landscaping, are you planning on using native, native.
Yeah, so, on Seventh Avenue, the building that is now completed and is being occupied, we had a lot of discussion. My engineer, Walt Hopkins, has done all of my approvals except for one in Asbury, and he got that right. So his landscape architect, who hasn't changed at the firm, is using similar plantings. So they are, they are native.
Thank you.
One quick question, Bill. I know that the TRC recommended that the width of the garage be shortened.
Yes, they did. I, I don't like to draw a line in the sand. I don't know how we could do that. I mean, it's un, I, how could you do it? If you were coming in and a car were coming out, a nine-foot garage door, I guess you could wave to the car coming out and say, back up, and you could drive in and get to your space. And if you were in the back of the garage, it just won't work practically. I don't know how, any other way other than to have two-way traffic. So, I, I know we, Michael Sullivan brought up the prominence of it, and Michelle and I talked about this and said, bring what the TRC got. So at the planning board, this is going to be muted, and I think, and Michael wanted an arched header over it to match all of the other arches on the, on the podium level in the first floor of living. So when we go to the planning board, this will be different.
Alright, thank you.
And you're on the planning board, I think. Am I correct there?
Yeah.
Now, Bill, I'm having trouble, like, where, is this building next to Porta? Is this the building in between the Spanish?
This is, this is the Brentwood.
Right, and then there's an apartment building next door.
No, there's a vacant lot, that's us.
There's a vacant lot, and then there's an apartment building, and then there's Porta. Okay, just to have a visual of it.
Yeah.
I wasn't, I was getting lost on that. And what, what was the height that you could go in this?
I believe, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was eight stories.
That's all.
I mean, the, you, you balanced the living area, the number of stories, with the parking, and, you know, Pat and I and Vince were very pleased when it all started to come together, and particularly pleased with twenty-eight spaces.
Any other questions?
Alright, well, thank you very much. We will stick around if you want to us to wait in case there's another couple of questions.
Right, please.
Thank you. Were we getting any questions?
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah. No, 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 Phil, 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 we'll run a meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought she was asking a question.
Well, she may.
She's, we just got, we've got to open it. You can stay there, Phil. You can stay there because the. You can stay there because the question will be directed to you.
We're now into public participation. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public participation portion of the meeting is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker.
Where's the mic?
Hey, this is Mike Sedano, 1004th. This is a question for the developer. Is there any public art component in this development?
That wasn't brought up at the TRC meeting.
Oh, silly then.
So I'm not, I'm not saying we wouldn't do it, it just wasn't brought up. We're doing a restaurant.
Where is this restaurant?
Kingsley and Second.
Porta.
Across from.
Oh, it's Porta.
From Porta. But that, when we were there at the TRC for that, we're, there is going to be a fairly substantial part of the building for local art. And I did the Dollar Tree with Pat Fasson. That has artwork on Third Avenue. And that was part of our proposal.
Right, so are you going to put any art in there? Or is that a?
I can't make that decision unilaterally. But I think it's more a question for the planning board and their vision, or even the council tonight saying now we would like to do it at the base. It's not appropriate, I don't believe, the upper floors. But we have an eight-foot wall basically from the ground to the first floor, which is stuck up and on the side of the building. We definitely could do it.
Well, okay, just keep yourself open to the fact that it doesn't have to be a mural again, okay? It could be a sculpture, it could be, you know, a piece of art that people walk around. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be murals, okay?
So if we had some guidance and you can get ahold of me, or I can give you my number after your time, or one would leave, open to that and actually think it's a good idea.
Yeah, interfacing with the Public Art Commission, I think, is a good idea. And, you know, I'm sure they would have all kinds of suggestions.
Okay. Then I have the time to go and talk.
Okay, great, thanks.
And Bill, you said if you wanted guidance from the council, the council's going to prefer you looking into art. Doesn't have to be mural. I know the planning board's going to hammer you on it, so you should be prepared for it.
Got it. Well, you know, I'll meet with them, come up with something that seems good, and maybe it's not an issue with the planning board.
It will be an issue.
You forward.
Yep. We got more questions? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Caitlin Capastro, 218 Second Ave. So I live in the Britwood building that neighbors the vacant lot. Forge and the developer as well. Is there any need to eliminate existing parking spaces on Second Ave?
Good question.
That's a great question. My engineer is not here tonight, he's in Europe. I would want to give you a specific answer, which will be the planning board. So I'm not getting invasive. I don't have, maybe we lose a space. But once again, with all of the spaces in the building, I don't envision the residents parking on the street.
Well, just to, I understand 28 spaces for 15 units. Technically, if there are two residents in single bedrooms, that equates to 10 spaces. If the two bedrooms are at max capacity or max occupancy, you're looking at 30 parking spaces. They also have friends and family, you know, visitors, things of that nature. So, just a concern.
Yeah.
Always a concern.
Okay.
And then the follow-up question is, if approved, is there a duration for construction to be expected?
Yes, I, I'm going to be the one spearheading that. So I think, let me think, it's like, in my mind, I'd like, what I think I can, I can get it done, I think there are plus or minus nine months. So it could be nine, eight and a half for 10. But this is not going on for a year. The process of bedding and getting the contractors, which we've worked with over the years, has already started. And by the time we have planning board approval, compliance, RABONs agreement, I'm a year ahead of putting the shovel in the ground. So I think it's going to go quickly.
And if I could just add, Mr. Mayor, if we are fortunate to proceed to that point, my experience is that the subsequent developer agreement will have very definitive and specific deadlines that we have to comply with.
Correct.
Anything else?
So just to follow up. If, if you have no curb cuts, we're going to lose parking spots. So if there's no curb cuts to this, okay, come on up.
There is a curb cut. There is a driveway that goes to the parking area. So there is the loss of one, um, on-street parking space.
Wow.
I believe it's just one.
Okay.
But maybe two, most, but it's just to accommodate the curb cut to get into the garage for the 28 parking spaces.
Okay, thank you. So there is a loss of at least one, maybe two. When you go to the planning board, and I know you know it, we're going to need a plan for construction, a staging plan. How are you going to build this without driving the neighbors crazy?
Yeah.
Where are you going to store your material?
Yeah.
And you know that.
Yeah, we own a lot across the street.
Okay.
And yeah, I understand that.
Okay.
And the engineer, when he brings the site plan drawings, Walt Hopkins, he'll address the loss of one or two spaces and the state construction sequencing of the site work. But minimal disturbance. We have storage across the street on a fairly good-sized lot.
Do you know where your sales office is going to be?
That could be across the street once the structure's up. Pat and I are talking about this. And, you know, we generally don't jump the gun and sell off a website. So I kind of like to have the building up and one of the units finished. And, you know, let people walk through and see. I know Hovdanian opened for sales as they were starting construction.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Ben Bridener, 512 Fifth Avenue. Should have some questions about the building as well. Sorry, Bill. I just, how close is it going to be to the Britwood building?
I'll bet, um, I don't have the site plan with me.
Okay.
But our side yard.
Just looks really close from there.
It is.
Yeah, it's really close, yeah.
We've got about seven or eight feet on our side yard.
To the fence.
And the Britwood.
Has about the same.
Is about the same.
Okay.
So it is more of an urban build than a suburban build.
Okay, I was going to say that Britwood has its air conditioning units out back.
Yeah.
I know you were saying earlier that you're going to be putting them on the roof line.
Yes.
Is that going to be above the window line of the existing Britwood units?
According, if Steve has this right on his Photoshop rendering.
Okay.
Which we can verify.
Let's go on, sorry.
The answer is yes.
Okay.
Our roof is higher.
Okay. And then you said you're doing stucco over, is that going to be stucco over timber?
I'm sorry?
The building material is going to be timber?
No, it's, so the front and sides predominantly.
Yeah, it's going to be stucco.
Are stucco.
Okay.
And it's over a cementatious board.
Yeah.
And two coats of stucco. This is not even.
It's going to be matching, though.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. The construction will take about a year. Parking, those parkings for, it's going to be two cars, one in front of another?
Yes, for the two bedroom units.
Okay. I just don't know how, like, just realistically, how convenient is that? And I, it's, you know, parking's sort of the biggest issue. I know on Fifth Avenue, they do have permit-only parking. I wish it was the same on Second or Heck or Burg.
Well, I'm here, I have.
No, no, I know that, but I'm just.
But I, I understand. So if it's a couple.
Yeah.
And whoever has to go first, and they're in there. They got to get out of bed.
They do, okay.
Move the car and come out.
And it's, it's long enough for two, you know, large cars, not just sort of two compact cars?
Yes, they're not so compact.
Okay. And then, you're saying it's going to be $150 a square foot less than the Aegean?
I, you know, this is, this is what we're thinking.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I mean, I have to have an idea to do the economics of this when I start. But, you know, once you invest the money and spend four years getting there, you know, our history is sell-out.
No, I mean, and that's sort of, you know, more than the parking and more than the building itself, you know, the biggest worry for me as an Asbury Park resident is keeping Asbury Park, you know, fun, artistic, youthful, affordable. You know, it's getting.
Your time is up, sir.
Oh, sorry.
You can go ahead because they were.
Is it all right if I finish?
Go ahead, yes, sir.
Yeah, it's just getting less and less affordable. And not only that, we're getting more seasonal residents, which I know when you're looking at it from an economic standpoint and, you know, the bottom line. But it does sort of make Asbury Park quieter in the winters. Means the businesses are having a harder time in the winters. I, you know, I don't know if I talk to the board or if I talk to you. Is there any way of sort of figuring out full-time residency or, you know, how does that work?
Well, I think there are going to be people that are, look like in your age cohort that are working from home.
Yeah.
And they, you know, the difference between $725,000 per million is substantial. So, you know, in my business, I've seen the cost go up astronomically. In the last 15 years, construction costs have doubled. So if we could sell at X less than $715,000, make a reasonable profit.
Okay.
We do it.
All right. I appreciate you saying that.
We do it in a heartbeat.
All right, thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to take this out.
Anybody else like to be heard on this or any other issue in the city? If not, then motion to close.
Move it, second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are now on to the minutes. At the executive meeting and regular meeting minutes from the September 25th, we need to have a motion.
Move it, second.
Councilmember Ben Anderson?
Yes.
Uh, councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn is away, Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now on to the consent agenda, resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council. Will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items.
Thank you.
Discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular items. And said items shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On the consent agenda, we have Resolutions 2024-442 through 2024-446. We have a motion.
Move it, second.
Councilmember Ben Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn is away, Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now on to individual resolutions. Resolution 2024-447, resolution approving payment of bills.
Okay.
Got a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ben Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn is away, Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2024-448, resolution awarding a bid for the purchase of four 2025 Chevrolet Tahos and six 2025 Chevrolet Traverses for the police department. Have that motion.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Ben Anderson?
No.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn is away, Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-449, resolution authorizing the purchase of equipment needed for the new police department vehicles.
Move it, second.
Councilmember Ben Anderson? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn is away, Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-450, resolution authorizing the purchase of firearms for the police department.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Ben Anderson? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-451, resolution authorizing a purchase of a live-scan system for the police department.
Move it, second.
Councilmember Ben Anderson? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-452, resolution authorizing a contract with the USA General Contractor Forum for a new HVAC unit needed on the council chambers room.
Move it, second.
Councilmember Ben Anderson? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-453, resolution authorizing agreement with Monmouth County Urban Search and Rescue.
Move it, second.
Councilmember Ben Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-454, resolution approving change order number one for the Prospect Avenue and Dangs Avenue intersection improvement project.
Move it, second.
Councilmember Ben Anderson? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-455, resolution awarding the preliminary development of a five-year master plan for the City of Asbury Park Urban Enterprise Zone.
Move it, second.
Councilmember Ben Anderson? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now on to ordinances for second reading and public hearing. I have ordinance 2024-31, ordinance of the City of Asbury Park amending and supplementing subsection 12-1.3 entitled Fees of Section 12-1 State Uniform Construction Code of Forcing Agency of Chapter 12, Building and Construction of the Code of the City of Asbury Park. Do I have a motion to open the meeting for public comment on ordinance 2024-31?
Move to open, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment on ordinance 2024-31 is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Your comments may only be about ordinance 2024-31.
Fred, could you give us just a brief explanation what this is about?
The uniform construction fees needed to be increased. And the recommendation is from our construction official to coincide with what's now currently proposed.
Okay, thank you. Anybody like to be heard? Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-31?
Motion to adopt, second.
Councilmember Ben Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
If that is all for tonight, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Move it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.